Good afternoon. We're going to call the Monday, May 20th budget hearing to order. Will you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco, Hotchkiss, House, Mario, Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider.
Here. Are there any public comment speakers? I don't see, probably not, right? No public comment speakers, no. So we'll move on to the work session and Chief.
Good afternoon. I'm Pat Malcolroy. Good afternoon. I'm Pat Malcolroy, Fire Chief for the City of Santa Barbara. We want to present our budget for the next fiscal year for you today. And the order of the presentation is going to be as follows. I'm going to do a quick department overview. And then Ron Lipti, our financial manager, will do the budget overview. Joe Pore, the Division Chief for the Prevention Bureau, will talk about the Prevention, Wildland, and Emergency Services. And Jim Bryden, our new operations chief, will talk about fire operations and aircraft rescue firefighting. And then I'll conclude with some comments and some of the challenges and transitions that we've gone through for the past few years. As you can see, our department is organized into two divisions. As a fire chief, I supervise both the Operations Division and the Fire Prevention Division, which also includes our Emergency, Office of Emergency Services, which is managed by Yolanda McGlinchey. We have an administrative services group, and that's headed by Ron Lipti. And Jim Bryden heads our Operations Division. The operations is essentially what the public sees in terms of fire engines and fire stations. Our department has 105 employees. That's down from 110 in terms of what you'll see in the budget, but it's a planned, it's I don't want anybody to get the impression that that's a cut. That was a planned attrition. Those positions existed only on the books for the last couple of years, and so we've made that adjustment in this year's budget. We have nine managers, 90-person fire bargaining unit, and six general employees. And like I said before, our programs are administration, operations, which includes aircraft rescue and firefighting, prevention, the Office of Emergency Services, and all SARL Wildland employees. So we work on a minimum staffing basis. So on any given day, in terms of the Operations Division, you'll have 29 people on duty, and they're on duty 24/7, 365. The battalion is, the daily shift is headed by battalion chief, and we work a 48/96 schedule. So that means that we're on for 48 hours, off for 96. It's exactly the same hours as we worked in our previous schedule, but it allows for more commuters or less commuting by the people that live further away. So the daily staffing is headed by battalion chief, who's based out of Station 1. And then we have three-person engine crews at seven stations, a three-person ARF crew at Station 8, which is out at the airport. And at Station 1, we have a squad truck rescue crew of four people. The rescue often operates independently of the truck crew, and they respond to most of the medical emergencies downtown. But for example, if you get a structure fire, vehicle rollover, entrapment, that four-person group responds as one unit. And these are the response districts of the city. They're, this is really effective model. We're really proud of our response times, and one of the reasons that we have such good response times is the layout that we have in the city. And in the cutout up in the upper right, you see the responsibility area of Station 8 out at the airport. I'd like to turn this portion of the program over to Ron Lipti.
Afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Ron Lipti, administrative service manager for the Fire Department, and I'd like to talk to you about the budget for the next coming year. The Fire Department is primarily a general fund department with 99% of its spending authority occurring here. The Wildland Fire Suppression Fund is a special revenue fund established in the year 2006 through a majority vote of the district's property owners. And for the remainder of this presentation, this Wildland Fund's fiscal information is included as part of the Fire Department's overall budget recommendations. And you can find these figures on page H168 of your budget book. This chart illustrates the relative size of each of our six fire programs. 88% of our budget is devoted to direct emergency response and firefighting activities by combining operations and aircraft rescue and firefighting. Likewise, 87% of our department employees work in these programs. These are appropriations by major object or spending category, if you will. This chart represents our major categories. It's apparent that the lion's share of these categories is represented in the salaries and benefits portion. We can talk more about that later with trending. Allocated costs are services provided to the Fire Department from other city departments. Includes costs for our fleet of, our fire fleet of vehicles, both the repair and maintenance of these vehicles and for the replacement. It's for fire station maintenance, computers, information systems, and liability insurance. Supplies and services includes most of other, our costs for running the Fire Department, such as fire station utilities, office supplies, postage, equipment rental, vehicle fuel, training costs, medical supplies, uniform maintenance, that type of thing. And equipment runs out, our major object category, and this includes personal protective equipment purchases, self-contained breathing apparatus equipment, hose and ladder, fitness equipment, urban search and rescue, emergency medical equipment, hazardous materials program This table displays the recent trend history for the major object categories, and we see an overall increase in appropriations from fiscal year 13 to 14 of just under 2%. Salaries and benefits sees a $417,000 increase, and that's primarily due to the expiration of salary and benefit concessions that were negotiated for and implemented during our past three years. There's also a budgetary adjustment that shifts other post-employment benefit costs to public safety programs. Supplies and services, the next line, sees a 7% decrease from fiscal year 13 to 14, and that's primarily due to special projects that were funded by a grant that have now been used up. And allocated costs see a small increase in its category, and that's primarily due to vehicle replacement maintenance and facility maintenance and increases in liability insurance. And equipment sees a small decrease, and that's because this year we've had to expend some funds for our Fire Academy, and in the next year, we're not going to have to do that. I'll move on to our revenues, and these are our major revenue categories for the Fire Department. And our largest revenue category is ARF, our Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting. And ARF is one of our largest revenue sources, and it's derived from providing emergency response and building fueling hand inspections to, services to the airport. AMR is part of, is American Medical Response. And as part of their contract with Santa Barbara County's emergency response agencies, of which Santa Barbara is one, the city receives a percentage of their revenues for our first on-scene response and basic life support services provided to people before AMR arrives on scene. Mutual aid reimbursements are from our revenues from other agencies and jurisdictions to cover our costs as we provide firefighting services to them. The fire inspection fees, our revenues are derived from engine company inspections, conducting building inspections, plan review and community development, and issuing fire code permits. The Prop 172 and the half-cent sales tax is a permanent half-cent sales tax approved by 58% of the voters in 1992, and it's dedicated to local public safety. And the other small category is some training reimbursement funding and hazardous materials cost recovery fees. And here again is a chart displaying the recent trend analysis of our revenues. We project higher than anticipated revenues in fiscal year 13, mainly in our mutual aid category. It was adopted at $400,000 in revenue, and we're going to come in at just under $700,000. And we just had a high degree of mutual aid incidents we've responded to. And we do have a category there, grants of $45,000 in fiscal year 13. And these were, these were grants that we received from the Santa Barbara County, as passed through from the Department of Homeland Security. And this is for special training reimbursements we receive for different firefighting activities such as task force leader mobilization exercises and rescue specialist training. For fiscal year 14, most of these revenues are budgeted to have a small percentage increase. If we anticipate a higher-than-anticipated fire season and a heavy request for the mutual aid assistance, we'll come back to council at that time to increase this category similar to what we've done in this year's budget. So that's my portion of the presentation for this afternoon. If there's any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them now or later on. Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce Joe Pore, our Fire Marshal.
Mayor Schneider, members of the City Council, Joe Pore, I'm the Division Chief of the Fire Prevention Bureau and the City Fire Marshal. I'd like to spend a brief time here on a description of the Fire Prevention Bureau and the duties. As you know, we are the Planning Enforcement Division of the Fire Department. Our inspection staff cover inspections that are difficult, complex, or time-consuming, and of course, code-intensive. We help create the code every three years, the adoption of the new fire code, California Fire Code. We review what the state has adopted, and then we write our own sections and adopt into local ordinance the fire code as it pertains specifically to the City of Santa Barbara. We're just starting that process now, so we're in a new code cycle, and we'll be doing that research. Information and public outreach, we provide a lot of information, especially in the way of bulletins, the blog for the Wildland, the website, Wildland website, and the Office of Emergency Services periodic bulletins. We also provide information for developers in the land development team. We are active members of the land development team. As members of the land development team, we participate in the development review, site visits, construction inspections, and share with other city staff in ongoing meetings what the Fire Department's concerns are in any given construction arena. Basically, our plan review percentage or annual P3s are that we will complete 95% of our plan reviews on time, and we're currently running about 99%. We also conduct inspection of fire protection systems, for instance, sprinklers and alarm systems and so forth. And we actually make sure that the proper tests are conducted. They have to be installed according to nationally-recognized standards, and that's what we do. Fire investigations involve a great deal of time, effort, and expertise. We conduct them from the fire scene all the way through prosecution, or in the civil arena, through the subpoena and deposition phases, all the way through trial. It's exacting work. It requires meticulous documentation, and all of the people involved in that particular field testify as experts in court. And we have a leading role in the Santa Barbara County District Attorney's Arson Task Force, which was recently formed. In the area of code enforcement, code enforcement pretty much runs gamut, usually fire code violations of the maintenance variety, often encountered by engine company personnel in the field. They'll refer them to the Fire Prevention Bureau and will conduct oftentimes lengthy follow-up on them. We have an inspector who's trained specifically in hoarding and the associated problems that that causes, and that's among the more time-consuming of code enforcement cases. We generally settle about 200 to 300 code enforcement cases per year. In the Wildland arena, our Wildland Division actually has two components, the General Fund section and the Wildland Fire Service Assessment District section, which will be in to renew tomorrow afternoon at 2:00. And the, it's up for a hearing tomorrow, but the General Fund section also has oversight of the Wildland areas throughout the city, and that includes the two coastal zones that are not included in the Assessment District and are equally important. The foothill and extreme foothill zones are covered by the Assessment District, and they provide special services to the taxpayers of that district. Finally, the Office of Emergency Services. We've all been trained by the manager of the OES, Yolanda McGlinchey, at one time or another, to be city employees in, at times of disaster. And the office has trained most city employees in that same thing, and I think that we're probably at about 90% of the city employees have some training in disaster awareness. And our Vital Emergency Operations Center is located at our headquarters at Station 1. And in addition to that, the OES provides public education, and this past year has been particularly successful in CERT training. We've had a Spanish-only CERT training class and a access and functional needs-only training class in CERT. And CERT, by the way, is the Citizen's Emergency Response Training. And of course, in addition to that, we have our public education for schoolchildren, which we work in operations with, in cooperation with our Operations Division. And that's basically, that's our new fire safety house right there, and it provides the opportunity to teach schoolchildren fire and life safety. And with that, I'll hand it to Chief Jim Bryden.
Afternoon, Madam Mayor, council. Jim Bryden, Operations Division Chief. I wanted to share today a few key P3 measures. You've heard the words P3, I'm sure, many times. And so we've selected a few key ones out to share with you today. The first one up there, it's provide basic life support. It's basically response time thing, within four minutes of receiving the alarm. Our goal is 80, and you can see we're at 92% year-to-date. The second one there is the, P3 goal is to contain 90% of all structure fires to the room of origin. It's also, you know, directly related to response time, and year-to-date, we're at 100%. The number of that is we're 15 out of 15 keeping them to the room of origin. The third one you see up there is engine company inspections. Our goal is to reach 95% of the scheduled occupancies that are assigned for that year, and we're currently at 105%. Typically, the reason that we're slightly ahead is as we get into summer, the time that we have to do inspection, engine company level inspections is impacted by, you know, Wildland responses or a busier summer response. So that's why you see us work ahead a little bit at this time of the year. Another P3 objective we have is to provide 1,000 hours of public education annually. Year-to-date, as of today, we're at 898, and we're right in, kind of reaching the end of the season where we use our fire safety house, which we target all third-grade classes in the city. So I'm sure that we're going to exceed that by the end of this fiscal year. Our P3 program also has project objectives, which is slightly different. And one of the projects during this past year that we were able to achieve was implementation of an enhanced water rescue team. We've always kind of done water rescue, but we've expanded it to the ocean arena to work more closely with Harbor Patrol. And this objective was achieved in February of this year. We've had a few responses, and it greatly enhances our ability to serve the public in that area. The second one you see is to conduct a recruit academy, and we're currently about a week left. We graduate at the end of next week, eight firefighters. The other program that's kind of under my area of operations is ARF, and one of the key objectives that we have is to respond to 100% of the emergencies on the AOA within three minutes. And it's not just to respond and show up, it's deliver water at that location within three minutes. And we're randomly tested by airport staff and the FAA. We don't know when that's coming, so all of a sudden, they show up and ring out a tone, and we have to go to some location, they tell us, and deliver. And we're at 100% on that. And they also do fire prevention inspections out there. There's a lot of fuel handling, mobile and stationary fuel handlers that they handle annually, and then all the hangars get inspected. And year-to-date, you can see, again, we're at 100% of those. One that's measurable objective that's somewhat new for 14 is there's a program that's come down through county EMS called Hands-Only CPR, and we're, you know, one of the major players in the county delivering presentations, and we're being somewhat aggressive with our presentations. We've gone out into the public rather than wait for, you know, somebody to come to us for this training and give demonstrations. We kind of take advantage of large groupings of people, you know, like a festival or some occurrence maybe at Paseo Nuevo to start, and hopefully, people will walk up and learn that valuable lifesaving skill of Hands-Only CPR instruction. Another measurable objective that's coming up in 14 is to conduct a feasibility analysis of enhancing our GIS capabilities. Currently, they're via mobile data computers, basically computers on the fire trucks. So what we're trying to analyze is the exploration of a tablet use in conjunction with that so that we can not only use them on a scene, but actually mobily on the scene, use a tablet to walk around for GIS function, building plans, you know, hazards to greater enhance our emergency response and our own firefighter safety. The second one you see up there is, and I think Chief Malcolroy's going to speak to this again in a few minutes, we're going to evaluate and overhaul. We're currently in the process of our promotional processes for the ranks of engineer and fire captain. We've had a little bit of turnover in the past few years, and we've had to actually expedite kind of the promotional process, and so we kind of are anticipating that slowing down a little bit and giving us a chance to actually overhaul that whole process. I want to take a second here and give a little outlook of what the fire season looks like. You know, we've received these updates constantly in the fire service, and this particular slide shows average precipitation of the past 12 months. And if you maybe focus on Southern California there, the darker the red, the worse the news, so to speak. And a large part of Southern California there is below 25% in annual precipitation over this time period, which points to a fairly large potential for an active fire This next set of slides, I think there's three or four of them, is something we're deriving from Firehouse Analytics. Firehouse is a records management program we use here in Santa Barbara Fire Department, and it keeps track of just about everything we do, a daily log, inspections, all of our incident reports are on there. It even keeps tracks of inventory, training reports, just about everything. And Firehouse Analytics is software that we have. It's actually fairly new that we've purchased recently, and it allows us to further analyze in many different ways, customize our analy, an analyzation of some of that data. And I just brought a few examples. This one here, you're looking at the call volume, day-to-night comparative, and then each day of the week. And so you can, you can kind of see what, a little bit of a picture of kind of how active we are, you know, day compared to night. And then as far as the week, I mean, this just shows a little blip as you approach the weekend, probably because of the swelling of our population as a tourist destination.
Do you go sunrise to sunset? Because obviously, how many hours in the day or night vary.
Actually, the next slide over, this tells you by time, our call load.
Thank you very much. But that's still each month, the daylight's going to be different.
It is. And I think we can probably input that analysis and derive that out of there.
But when you say day/night, is it a specific time, like 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.? Or is it sunrise to sunset? What is day?
You know, that's a good question. I'm not sure what parameters were inputted into that slide.
Okay.
It's probably an 1800 thing, 6:00 in the evening to 6:00 in the morning would be night.
12-hour increments? So it's possible, like, in the summertime part of your night is still, it's quite light out for a few hours in the morning? Okay, thank you.
Exactly. And this next slide actually kind of speaks to that a little bit. It's, the bottom line there you see is hour of the day, and then you can kind of see where the calls actually go by hour increase. You can, as people become more active and the city kind of wakes up, so to speak, you know, you see about 10:00 till, you know, maybe 10:00 or 9:00 at night, you know, is probably our most active time. But we're pretty consistently active throughout the whole 24-hour period. This next one shows, you know, a large percentage of our calls are EMS calls, and, but this next one shows the comparison of EMS to non-EMS calls. This last slide here is, they call it a dashboard, and what it shows there, this is related to call processing and response times. And we can take any part of the call processing, from the receipt of it at our dispatch center to the response, which, and then the time between, you know, maybe the end code and to the responding time, which is that second one called turnout time, and then total time, travel minutes. And we can separate it out any way we really want, but, you know, and this is real data that's inputted here. It's not just, you know, something fictitious. This is all from 2012.
If I may, does the nature of calls change daytime versus nighttime?
So... Just to speak from experience, I don't have data in front of me, but yeah, I think it probably does.
Meaning?
I think our fire calls, actual fire calls, would increase at night, and I'd say the reason for that, basically, is there are less people out and about to discover these things, so they go a little longer, and then they, you know, they end up being a little more significant or significant-type calls.
Medical emergencies are spread evenly, do you think?
I think it is pretty, pretty even. But those are good questions, and then with Firehouse Analytics, that, those are reports, if we were to get a question, we could provide much easier.
When will you have that in effect, you know?
We could do it today. We just ask the question, we go back, input what you want to know, and it's right back to you. We could email it to you.
I just asked. That'd be great.
Okay. That concludes the operations overview. If there's any questions regarding operations or ARF?
Madam Mayor, councilman?
I have a question, but maybe it's for you, Chief. I don't know. Is there any equipment that you don't have that you think would better allow you to respond to the kind of calls that you get?
It's Councilmember Hotchkiss. That's a fairly open-ended question.
It is, very.
But I, right now, I...
Jim Armstrong is now ducking, you know?
I feel, I feel pretty confident that we're in, we're in good shape. We have, as I'll talk about in a few minutes, we have two new engines in the pipeline, one arriving as soon as, within the next month or so. We have another one on the way through a combination of grants, a number of things. We're in good shape.
I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Mario, I have a question. Go ahead.
Thank you. I saw in the budget book a reference to a future goal, 27 known assembly occupancies in the Entertainment District. Is that for people who have dance permits?
I think Joe could probably better address that.
Thanks, and I didn't have my wits about me when you were up there, sir.
Councilmember Mario, that's correct. A lot of them will have dance permits. The assembly, the assemblies in the Entertainment District where most of the dance permits are, is an area of focus for us.
And some of the theaters downtown, I guess, they would have higher standards?
The theaters have an assembly standard, but, but we focus on the establishments where alcohol is consumed. alcohol is consumed, just because exiting can often become a problem in those places, as well as overcrowding.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I want to go through towards the end here, the kind of transitions, accomplishments, and some challenges that we have that have been ongoing, some are concluding, and then what we're looking for in the future. As you can see with this slide here, we're just completing our first year in our new administrative offices building. We've worked out most of the bugs with the building, and we're very happy to have both parts of our organization essentially back on the same campus now with the completion of Station 1 remodel and the administrative headquarters. It's, we feel very good about our facility downtown. The past couple of years, we've had slightly over 20% of our department retire, which is an unusual spike for fire departments, certainly nothing, like nothing I've seen in the 32 years I've been with the department. Also, in that same period of time, we had an 80% turnover at administration. And as I was sitting here, I realized that we not have only had one new, one new chief, we've had two new chiefs in that, in that period, a new operations division chief, and all four of our battalion chiefs are new in the last couple of years. As that has occurred, and people have moved up and people have retired, we've promoted 15 new captains, which is over half of the captains that we have, 14 new engineers, a new inspector, and a new fire services specialist. And in this time also, actually, in the last two and a half years, we've hired 19 new firefighters. And we had, we went to lateral recruitments, and we're concluding our second of, our last two academies have been lateral recruitments, which means they're coming from other departments. We're not hiring, this isn't anybody's first job. We had a fairly high standard, very competitive standards to, for these people to achieve. And so we looked at their experience, the type of experience, the amount of education they've had, the amount of fire experience that they've had. And it was, it was a pretty amazing group of people both times. I certainly would want, not want to be competing with the people that we're hiring now, and particularly this, both classes are really good, but we're very, very pleased with the group that's going through right now. And like Jim said, their graduation is next Thursday at 5:00 at Station 1, if you would be able to come to that. They are replacing over 600 years of experience that walked out the door. So it was very important for us to get experienced people right off the bat. So we're not starting with people with no experience and bringing up the speed. We needed to have, we have a lot of new captains, new engineers. We needed firefighters filling in behind them that brought a lot of experience with them. Ideally, our next academy in 2015, we're interested in doing an open recruitment. So then we will be back to hiring people where they're a little earlier in their career, and we're trying to focus on local people as well. It's, we've had a good experience in that regard, and that's the way we'd like to continue going. I think it's worth noting, too, that these are in-house academies, so they're done by our people at our facilities. I know that different agencies will bring people, they'll send their people away to an academy. We do it in Santa Barbara at our training facility and throughout the city. What I've just talked about, the turnover and the challenges of having all these people in new positions, has a significant effect on our training division. And I would really like to focus, the last couple of years, I know, have been focused on staffing and, and other issues that were challenging the department, station closures, potential brownouts. And I think it's something that we really need to look at, is we're back to doing what we need to do in terms of training. And it's a significant impact to have this many new people throughout the ranks in our department. The impacts of an academy and our training is significant. It's a 4,000-hour, about a 4,000-hour commitment when you, when you work into the instructor's times, the student's times for an eight-week academy. I just talked to one of our training captains, our training captain today, and he was talking about an eight-hour class that they did last week, and he felt that the two instructors, on their own time put in 40 hours, preparing, just preparing for the class. So there's a real high level of commitment from our, from our own people that are teaching these classes. And over 50% of our department is involved directly or indirectly in, actually, I would say over 50% of our department is directly involved, the rest of the department are indirectly involved. But through this whole process, both as instructors, as people that worked on the recruiting the, our new people, that did interviews, that helped write the questions for the exam, that went through resumes, did the practical testing, and work as members of our training committee, recruitment committee, or as an academy instructor. So there's a really big ownership in our, in our new people, and I think it really pays off. To that end, I really want to recognize our training division. It's headed right now by Chief McCoy, who's assisted with, assisted by Captain Pagetti. But over the past couple of years, it's also included Chief Waldron, Captain Zoraracio, and Captain Bryant. And they, I think that Jim will agree, it's definitely the highest level of training, most professional training that we've had in our decades here in this department. I'm very, very proud of them. In addition to the, the new recruit training, in 2012, we conducted a battalion chief exam, a captain's exam, an engineer's exam, finished up the probation of the previous recruit academy. And then that's in addition to 20,000 hours of mandatory training that the training division administers. So it's, like I said, there's a tremendous amount of work done in training, and it's one of the things we're most proud of as a department. One of the things that we just were able to secure in the past couple of weeks, actually, was an assistance to firefight grant, which is a program that's managed by FEMA. We're in partnership with Carpinteria Summerlin Fire, who was the lead on this, and Montecito and our department, we received a grant for about $500,000 to replace all of the radios that our firefighters use. And this will allow every firefighter to have an individual radio, individual charging unit, and also will enhance the paging system for our computer aided dispatch, which is headquartered at the police department. It's a really significant purchase. We will be providing 80, or 20% of that as the matching part of the grant, which is about $86,000, which gives us a total purchasing power of $431,000. It's a, it's a really significant thing. It's going to allow us to communicate better with our local agencies. We did a project that was mandated by state for narrowbanding our radios, and in doing that, we found that some of the channels that we need to use weren't, we weren't able to program into our existing radios. So not only are we replacing our portables, we're also replacing what are called our mobile units, which are fixed inside of each of the, each of the engines.
So will this allow county and city fire to talk to each other where you couldn't sometimes before?
No, we, we could always, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we could always communicate with each other, but this allows us a greater range of channels to communicate on, both our main channels, our command channels, but also our tactical channels. And it also helps us in responding out of area, and also to communicate with agencies that are coming into our area. We're so dependent on mutual aid, and we're, you know, active participants in giving mutual aid, that being able to talk, locate channels that we wouldn't normally be able, wouldn't normally be communicating on is essential to us. But this really helps with the communication with Montecito and Carp Summerlin, and that was kind of the basis of the grant, that that was the need that they especially had. So this allows us to all communicate better.
So if we have a fire in the hills that's, that requires people to come from other parts of the state to help us fight fires, now we have a better ability to share channels with them? Is that what we're seeing here?
Yeah, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that's correct. We also, we are a part of the county operational area, and every year we do a communication plan, this countywide plan, that we, we can supply to mutual aid agencies. The whole way that we're able to communicate now is just light-years away from where we were a couple of years ago, where we can, say, if we have an incident action plan here for something like the tier that has a Zeta fire, we can email that to incoming engines now, giving them mapping, and they can send it to a smartphone, an iPad, something in the, in the fire engine to people who are on their way down, who have never been in this area before. So it's really, really, we're moving really fast in this area.
Well, it's great news. I hope we don't have to use it anytime soon, but glad we have it. Thank you.
Likewise, sir. Like I said before, apparatus replacement, we have two engines in the pipeline. This is through a program through Public Works, where we're setting aside money every year as part of our allocated costs to replace our fleet. And it goes on a schedule that's maintained by Public Works. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that later, and in some other areas of equipment that we're talking about. But this is, this is actually, this picture kind of indicates a cooperation. It's one of the fire mechanics from Public Works, one of our firefighters up in central California, looking at the fire truck that's being built for us. And so that is a Type 3 engine, that's a Wildland-type engine. It's a higher, shorter wheelbase, sits higher up. And currently, we have, have only had one of those for the past 10 years, and that's been at Station 7. And this one will go to Station 7. We decided to add another Type 3 engine, just because of the experience the last couple of years. So our older Type 3 will now be going to Station 4 on Ontario, which will give us access up into the areas on, you know, North Ontario, San Roque areas. And we have a Type 1 fire engine also on order. Type 1 engine is our standard frontline fire engine that is used throughout the city. Want to talk about some of the challenges that we have ahead. And one of the things that we've been tasked to do and are actually anxious to do is look at the partnering with the airport department on a study of the aircraft rescue and firefighting for the future of the airport. The cost for our, that part of our, the service to the airport is significant, and we, it bears examination. So we're going to be sending out an RFP to some, some agencies or some companies that have worked in this area, actually, a number of them. And it's going to take a look at the cost of staffing, equipment, take into consideration the needs of the airport, and the financial impacts of the city as a whole. It's, it's going to be an impartial look, and then when we get that, then we'll, we'll sit down and talk about the larger issues with the airport. And it's, it's important to look at the whole picture, and I think this will give us a place to start. But we're anxious to work with the airport on this, and I, I talked to Ms. Ramsdale this morning, we'll be setting up a meeting and putting the proposal together.
Training for the airport crew must be quite different, or not, than the rest of our personnel?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, it's, it's challenging because there's costs associated with training people at the airport, not so much for about 90% of it, but for the 10%, we have to send them to a live fire once a year. There's, there's costs of that. We've experimented with a number of different options. We've gone so far as to fly people to Utah. We used to go to Point Magoo, we still do, we send people to San Bernardino Airport. So getting that burn has some costs in it. The other part of that is training, keeping them up on their mandatory training, and all the other aspects of what we do. So it isn't just, when people are out at the airport, they're, they're still fully functioning firefighters for everything else that we do in the department. So we, we, it's, we're rotating people out there to bring them into the city, keep them fresh, and being able to function in the city as well. I think as a department, that's one of the things we didn't do well in the 20-plus years that we have had the airport, is not rotating people enough, and we're keeping an eye on that this year.
Thank you. Chief, has there been some dissatisfaction with the way the ARF program is running now?
Councilmember Mario, I don't believe it's dissatisfaction, it's just in these, in challenging budgetary times, everybody's looking at their costs. And, and I think it's appropriate for the airport to, to look at the ARF program and see if there's a better way of doing it. It's appropriate for us to look at it. So I don't think that it's a question of service, it's a question of costs and, and staffing, and, and they want to look at all the options, and I think that's appropriate.
I look forward to that coming to the council. Thank you.
Another challenge that we have in the future is our, the actual training tower, the, the four-story building you see in this slide. Our training facility, I think, is a very, very good one. We're happy with the facility itself, but the tower is presenting us with some challenges. The facility opened in 1980, the tower portion was constructed in 1983. And our training tower operates as, when I say training tower, it's a training facility. It operates as a regional training center. So Santa Barbara County just had an academy, and they rent several of their people through this. I know the police department uses it, Montecito has used it, Carpinteria Summerlin, any number of agencies use the tower. We have built up damage to the interior of the department, of the tower over the couple of decades we've been using it. And for our current academy, we're not burning inside the tower because of the damage to the concrete. So we've had an engineering study of the facility, and we want to look at the costs going forward on repairing, either repairing the facility or completely building a new one. So the cost range in that is anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000 to 1.3 million to a new tower. So we're obviously looking for a fix rather than a new tower. And one of the things we will talk about is, this is a regional training center, and talking to some of our partners about how they'd like to move forward in terms of helping us with the training tower.
Do we charge other outside agencies when they're using the facility for their training purposes? Or do we just have it open?
We have not charged that, because it's in, it's, we, there are some private people that use it that we do some cost recovery for. The, the feeling that we have is that those are the same people that we're going to depend on in mutual aid, and any cross-training that we can do, any, any collaboration that we have, any improving their skills is in our citizens' interest.
Has there been talk, though, about the one-time rehab cost of trying to share some of that, or is that just not even a non, is that a non-starter with some of them?
Madam Mayor, I don't know if it's a non-starter, but it is going to be started. But we will, we will be starting those conversations, and we'll see where they go.
How tall's the tower?
That is four stories. It's, I think it's about...
I got the four-story part, but...
Okay, I think it's...
Forty-two?
Forty-two? Or sixty? Okay.
Forty-six feet?
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't remember with all our planning stuff, if that, if we have any, it's not, it's a community development issue, but I'm just curious. Okay, thank you very much. Why don't you come up to the mic if we're on camera here, so, and just introduce yourself for the record? Thank you.
I'm Chief McCoy, I'm the training chief.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, what we do right now is, although we don't do dollar-for-dollar, we do bartering, or what I call bartering. For instance, Carpinteria will come down and do some training for their fire department, but they'll train our water rescue guys behind their jet ski, which we don't have. And so we do do, not like-for-like, but, but training that helps us and keeps us going over some while. That stuff with San Barbara County, we do that kind of training.
Thank you. No, I think it's, it's very helpful that we're all training locally, too, and you get to know each other well, well, also, so, okay, just curious. Thank you.
Another one of the challenges we have is finding funding for our large equipment purchases. We have been really successful at going after some grants. Chief Bryden got a grant for, from the CHUMASH to help outfit our newest ladder truck. The Firefighters Alliance, I'm sure you're all aware of, has been a significant friend of our fire department over the past six or seven years. We also have gone for the assistance for firefighters grants, the radios this year. We had some exhaust systems put in for the stations to exhaust diesel soot, and those are, that's another one that we got through there. Also, as was mentioned earlier, we get some money through Homeland Security funds through the county. That, that seems to be drying up. All these sources are in different stages of flux. So what we're looking at now is how do we fund our significant purchases in the future? We, in 2015, through the capital improvement plan, we're going to be replacing our breathing apparatus, which are the bottles that we wear for interior firefighting, and that's a $462,000 capital improvement project. What I've been talking to city administrators' office about, and where we want to go in the future, is start looking at our large equipment purchases like we look at our vehicle replacement, and start setting aside money instead of turning to somebody, some future council in a couple of years and saying, "We need a half million dollars for this," or $750,000 for this. And so we, we can look at, there are certain things that we know have a lifespan, they have a significant cost, we have to start identifying them, and that's one of the things we're going to be doing this year, identifying them, and then looking at a way to pay for them in the future. So it's, it's, like I said, it's, it'll be modeled after the way that we replace our The last issue I want to talk about today is Fire Station 7. It was originally constructed, and that's our station up on Mission Ridge. It was originally constructed, and that's our station up on Mission Ridge at Stanwood. Its original construction was 1950. Its basic configuration has not changed to reflect kind of the staffing and the way the fire service has changed in that time. So all of our other stations have either been remodeled or relocated and new stations built. This one stays, has stayed the same. There's a significant cost attached to it, and I know in the, in the balancing of the needs of the city, this is probably not going to come up real high on the list of things that need to be taken care of, but it's something that I, that I look at. One of the things that we want to be, we want to explore over the next year is the possibility of somewhere, sometime in the future, building a coast station with the United States Forest Service. The Forest Service has been up there for about 10 years now. I think the community has really benefited from having an extra engine in the area, but we need to have a plan for the future. We can't just have it stay in the status that it's at. We need something that looks at where we're going to be 10 years, 20 years, 30 years down the line, and those are the discussions I'm interested in having with the local Forest Service. They've been cooperative. They just, we just did a repaving project up there, and the Forest Service is picking up the tab for that. And it's, it's a significant amount of money, and so they're interested, they're interested in keeping that presence there because it gives them a station between their San Marcos station and the Rincon Station, which is down on the southern end of Carpinteria. So it gives them direct access up Gibraltar into the middle of the Comino Cielo area.
So the station location would be the same, would just be combined with the Forest Service?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, that's, that would be my, my desire, to keep it in the same location. We have the room, the, the way the roads work up there, it's a great, it's great for both departments, the access that they would need, and, and the, the ability to develop that, and on that same footprint, I think, is something we could look at.
The Forest Service engine company there, is, does it change in size depending on the, the intensity of the hazard, or what's, what's their rough staffing?
It's staffed, it's staffed seasonally. There's a presence, Jim, you might be better on that one.
They're actually staffed year-round, but with a smaller amount of staff. I think in the winter months, from November through May, they become a five-day engine. And then in May, when the seasonal folks, seasonal help comes on, they turn into a seven-day engine. And they're typically staffed from 9:30 till 6:00 at night. At the times when there's fire danger weather, they can do extended staffing till 8:00 or 10:00 at night. So they're not there all night, and there is increased staffing throughout the summer months.
And, and what numbers of firefighters do they have?
Their minimum staffing is, is four, and they'll be, in the summer months, they'll put five or six on an engine.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to talk about some unfunded service enhancements that we're proposing. One of them is the, was presented to us by Public Works last, last few weeks, we've been dealing with some problems with communications and reliability between, you know, in our stations. And they've identified the, replacing the digital microwave links as a solution to our, our problem. It's far too technical for me to get beyond kind of a baseline, but basically, it allows the, the links between the stations, our computers, our radios, everything to be a much more reliable system than we've had in the past. In numbers, it would go from a maximum of 10 megabytes a second up to 100 megabytes a second. So it would be, instead of being a radio link, it would be analogous to having a hardwired link to your communications, your computer, and things like Firehouse, which is our records management system, as Jim was saying. We're just scratching the surface of what we can do with that and the analysis we can provide, we can provide you. But we need that to stay up 24/7, 365 days a year, and we have problems with our, that system. We're not capturing the data that we need to capture on a, on an hour-by-hour basis. So that is the proposal that we're going to be putting for you. And the other one is a confined space communication system, and I'd like Chief Bryden to address that one.
Confined space rescue is, of, of the technical rescue disciplines that we do, it's probably the most regulated of any of them, so there's specific requirements of what we have to have in place before we can make an entry to what is a defined confined space. It's, it's a federally regulated definition. And currently, we can, we have communications and air to go into a confined space about 200 feet. We're required to have two rescuers with the same exact capability out. It's, I don't know if you've heard the term "two in, two out." We have to have those guys in place to rescue the rescuers, if that's the, the need. What we're looking at is equipment that would increase our capability to another 100 feet, 300 feet, and it brings our equipment up to date. Currently, the, the communications equipment we have, it's probably about 25 years old, and, you know, it, it works, but the operational effectiveness is, is just not ideal. We lose some communications, and, you know, you miss a few words here and there because it's just not, it's just old, old stuff. It doesn't work as good as it used to. So to be able to increase that capability would greatly enhance our rescue capability and our own firefighter safety.
That concludes the department's presentation. I just want to give a couple of thanks out, and I really want to thank the people in finance. This being my first year doing this, I want to thank Ron Lipton, and especially Michael Peace and Bob Samario for their help during this budget process. It was, they were, anytime I picked up the phone, they were, they were there and, and very helpful. I'm very proud of this organization, and I think you and the, and the city should be very proud of it as well. Like I said, we've gone through the greatest period of transition I've seen in 32 years that I've been with the department, and the talent and commitment of our people on all levels is very high, very high. And I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm very proud of it. We have a lot of new people and new roles, and we have a very high level of confidence that they're going to perform well in those new roles. And I feel very good about the future of the department, and thank you, and we're available for questions.
Thank you. I don't see any public comment speakers for the fire. We'll do police after, right? No? Okay. So to the council, Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation today. Chief, you said that you would like to hire more local people into the department. What is your strategy for doing that, please? And do you have a plan for hiring more women? Something important to me.
Councilmember Mario, we're having, not having done this for a couple of years, we're going to be reinventing it and doing outreach through, through human resources. There's conferences. I just received one, uh, now, through the International Association of Firefighters, which all of our members, all of our union members are part of, where they're doing outreach for women in the fire service. We're actually going through a period where a lot of the women that we hired are retiring. So it is an area of interest for our department. It's a, we are, we're doing ride-alongs through a local EMT program at Santa Barbara City College. Everybody that applies for the job has to have a current EMT license, so two of our, one of our captains and engineers, Chris Miles and Jack Franklin, teach that program, and it's one of the highest-attended programs in the state. So that's where we're looking, that's why the areas we're getting a lot of the students riding along, riding along with us, and that is a combination of young men and women.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, and thank you for your, for your summary. I'm seeing that this year, we're, we don't have any grants coming in in the wildland area, or at least that are being, showing up on the financial radar this time. Is there any, are there any in the works, and this, that we've, have been successful in the past? Could you speak to that, please?
Councilmember White, we actually are, we're, we're in the process of, we received one that, right now, we're doing for evacuation routes that, that's ongoing, and that showed up probably in last year's-
Yes, I did see that.
-presentation. And Joe, did you have anything else to add on that?
Councilmember White, just that we, we just closed out that grant that we had last year as well, so that's, it's two grants that we worked on in fiscal year 2013, and we're always looking for more. Of course, the maintenance of those grants is, is the tough part, but, you know, we're always looking for help in that area.
But there are none in the works at this point?
There are none currently.
Okay, thank you. And then another piece of it, I do see a separation out of the, of the, of the cost of general funds. There's, there's two, basically, two lines for wildland. One is the Benefit Assessment District, and then one of them is the, the general fund. Is that, I'm, I'm imagining, however, that there's a significant chunk of the basic operation that is, that works in wildland. And can you speak to that? In other words, like Station 7 staff is going to be doing inspections and so forth and so on. Do you, do you look at, at, at the budget from that perspective at all of what's being invested in, in wildland work besides those two lines?
Councilmember White, we do, and, and tomorrow, we'll go into that a little further in that it's not just within the department, but citywide. We have a substantial commitment from Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and other city divisions that are devoted to that wildland effort. So it is a, it's not just the fire department that's involved, it's cooperative effort throughout. And of course, it's not just fire prevention or the wildland division and fire prevention. It's also the engine companies, the inspections, they perform defensible space inspections, homeowner assistance, and those kinds of things in cooperation with our wildland folks.
And I didn't see the, the engine company inspections in the P3. Is that a, I'm imagining there's a P3 metric, or two or three, associated with that as well? Is that, am I on base with that?
The, the engine company inspections, that, that, they're routine inspections, or the, anything that they do in the wildland area would be wrapped up in, in their general inspections.
But, so that there's, is there a, a line that talks about the defensible space inspections or something to that effect?
Not for the engine companies, I don't believe. Maybe Chief Bryden could speak to that better than I could.
I think there is a defensible space inspection as part of your engine company inspections.
We, we do conduct those upon request, but they're not part of the number of inspections or that P3 goal that's on there. It's in, it's in addition to.
Okay, thank you. Well, we can talk about that another time. I've got a couple more questions, Mr. Hotchkiss.
And one more thing, Councilmember White, the, I think one of the things you were talking about, how does it fold into operations, the cost for wildland operations? It's part of that training that we're, we're doing on an annual basis, and we just completed our annual wildlife, wildland refresher. And, and so everybody, like I said, the people at Station 8, every, every single person, the inspectors, every single person goes through that wildland training annually.
Yeah, I can get, get plenty of practice here, don't they? Yeah. Okay, then the next question is the, the age of the engines, and we've talked, you've talked about there being two engines, a brush truck and an engine that are, that are being ordered this year. Last year, I had asked about the, the overall fleet and sort of how it's, it's fitting into the, you know, how old are they, how much money is set aside, where are we in the, I mean, this is, it's, I, I would imagine it's the largest single investment of equipment of any department when you start talking about seven. What do, what do we have, a dozen engines or something like that that we're trying to keep ready?
Well, we're, Councilmember White, we're concentrating on the seven frontline engines, plus two crash trucks that are maintained at the airport, plus the two ladder trucks, and then specialty equipment primarily based out of Station 1, which would be our ladder truck and our heavy rescue. In addition to that, we have the two type three engines, plus we have a fleet of five type one reserves. So it is a significant investment, but-
Closer to, well, I mean, the, the reserves are going to be older, of course, and all of that. Anyway, the, the question that I have is about the, and if it's not available now, I'd ask that, that we get that orientation somewhere along the way, is, it's basically in the matrix of the vehicle fleet itself of just gaining the perspective. I mean, these things, as we've learned, are a million, I mean, that ladder truck was, was at a million dollars or some such number like that. So that is really something where you want to be putting money in the piggy bank for a while before it's, it's, the changeover is needed. And my question has to do with the fleet as a whole. I'm certainly grateful that we're able to, to replace the two this year, but how does that, how does that fit in time? So if we could see something about that in the future, I know I, for one, would appreciate seeing how we're doing there.
We'll definitely give you a more detailed explanation, but Chief Bryden has a quick comment on that.
We have a vehicle or a fleet replacement policy, and it, and it gets slightly adjusted, but basically, we would like to get frontline operation for 15 years out of a piece of apparatus. And we work with Motorpool very closely. I, I meet with the head of that, Gary Horwald, you know, on occasion, and we discuss fleet replacement and where we're at. I know that we've increased it from 15 to 16 years during, you know, fiscal challenging times, but I think we're heading back towards getting it on 15-year. And so basically, what we do is we prorate it out, what's that going to cost, and then we pay that, we pay Motorpool that amount of money, and they replace it. So everything is on a replacement schedule.
I, I, I hear that, I respect that. I appreciate that the city has taken, the vehicles is one of those areas where I feel like we've made the most progress in the last decade by institutionalizing that. And engines are one of those elephants in the room, as it were, because they're, they're, they last longer, they cost more, and so whatever wasn't funded in earlier days is still, could still be lurking out there. And of course, inflation is, is always going to be there. So just, just the whole perspective on that, I would imagine there's a, a chart available, or not, maybe not available, but at least that's the kind of information which I think could give us a good sense of where we're fitting in that, in that financial program.
And Councilmember White, I'll make that available to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you have any idea what your attrition is liable to be this year?
I think we're looking at two right now, but we, and we've done the hiring for the both of those people. So we anticipated that, and, and as part of this, we don't want to be running academy every year, so we're, we're anticipating, we have the ability to do that, and so that's what we've done in this case.
Thank you.
Mr. House?
Just two questions, sort of in that same area. One, succession planning and looking forward. You haven't been chief for a long time, so it's-
Yeah, I wasn't planning on successor, yeah.
But just really, truly looking ahead and looking at your numbers that you've got up there, you know, and it makes you want to think it through. And where are you in that process? I mean, how do you, how do you think of that as you look forward?
Councilmember White, or Councilmember House, I'm sorry. Well, we're, we're always, we're looking at the, we just gave a battalion chief's exam in the, in the past month and promoted people. We have acting programs at every level, so we have acting battalion chiefs, acting captains and acting engineers. We're, we're, we're re-looking at all of that stuff because we've had such a transition, but that we've depleted a lot of those lists. But in the acting battalion chief program, we have several quality people involved in there. And our, and our own administrative staff, we have really talented people that I think we're, I'm trying to give as much experience to, to, to be able to step up into leadership roles. One of the things that I've been trying to do is get fellow staff members into any of the financial meetings we have, because that's an area I think that we haven't, we haven't done real well at. You just move into a job, and all of a sudden, you're at, at budget planning sessions, and it would have been nice to have an idea what you're walking into. So we're, we're trying to do that. But in terms of the, the acting programs we have, I think we do a really good job of getting our people ready for the next level. I think you're going to see that in this new staff we've assembled now.
Oh, it sounds like you're pretty deep in the upper leadership area, and you're really developing the complementary skill sets that might be required. Going on the other end of it, I was intrigued by your relationship with City College and the EMT program. And the question goes a little beyond maybe the budget right here, but I imagine that there's young people out there looking at what, you know, aspiring to some career, and they, they hold you guys in really high regard. Is that actually a legitimate path for somebody to move into a service with our fire department, is to get an EMT degree over at, at City College and then look for some way to work with you? Or is, or is it different from that? Do they have to go work elsewhere and then maybe get recruited back in?
Councilmember House, the EMT is a basic requirement. That's, and, and that's one of the people that are interested in getting in the fire service. That's the first thing that they're going to, they're going to do, and so that's their entry level. As they're, they do a ride-along with our department usually in, in the emergency room is part of that process. And so people that are interested in, in getting in the fire service, they start networking at that- at that level. And there's a number of things you can do. You can work for the Forest Service, you can work for CAL FIRE, you can work in reserve programs in different departments. But you're putting together a portfolio and the EMT is kind of the, the starting point for that.
I see. And you're sharing that or members of your team are sharing that possibility, the opportunity with young people who think about that as a career path?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting because the, where that sharing is going on is at the lowest levels of the department, the entry level. People, there's a large pool of people out there, they're trying to get into the fire service. So they're, they're communicating with each other and they're, and they're, they're starting to understand what their competition has. So it's, it's kind of a self-taught group. We, when people come in, we're glad to spend time with them, talking about what other things they need to get into the career. But it's a very competitive group and they're out there compiling some awfully impressive resumes.
Wow, that's really great. Okay, well, my other questions have to do with what we're going to talk about tomorrow. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Do you have a sense of the final numbers of the mutual aid down in Ventura County recently and how that all came about?
Madam Mayor, not yet. I think that'll, that'll be developing over the next couple of weeks. We're going to start invoicing some of that stuff.
And do you find, you know, you sometimes hear about state cuts and, but everyone says, but we'll make sure mutual aid is covered. And are you seeing any concerns in the future with making sure when there's mutual aid that those kind of processes are still paid on a timely basis or, you know, because that obviously deals with budgetary cash flow and things like that?
Madam Mayor, what I would say to that is I haven't seen anything that would shake my faith in the California mutual aid system. I think it's a very robust system and I, I feel like I can count on it and that's why we're so eager to supply help to other agencies when they ask, because we know that we will benefit from it and have benefited from it.
Great, good answer. Great. Any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to the police department.
Okay, I was waiting for you to look up, Madam Mayor. Thank you for having us. Before we get started, I want to introduce my staff to you. Lori Peterson is here, our business manager, captains Widom, Torres and Eltavilla, and they're going to be presenting their highlights and their vision for their respective commands in a few slides. We also have Deputy Chief Maddox to my left, you know him well. He oversees our budget process, he also oversees our business office, and I want to thank him and especially Lori Peterson for all the hard hours and weekends that they came in to do our budget. And we welcome Lori to the staff, she's done a great job. So stealing her from Jim was, was a good thing that we did. Police departments everywhere are facing challenges. Today, we're going to discuss some of those challenges with you. Some of the things that we want to look at in the future is our vision in protecting the city. The ultimate, the ultimate goal is always to decrease crime, to address the quality of life issues in our, in our neighborhoods and to get, and the third and probably one of the most important pieces is to get the community to become a part of us in a variety of ways that we'll discuss later in terms of collaboration and partnerships in policing their own communities. Go ahead. We're going to give you a department overview. We're going to talk about expenditures and revenue, of course, our police staffing paradigm that a couple of you have asked me about this weekend, and of course, our P3 and divisional highlights, we'll get to those in a few slides. Again, the ultimate goal for us is to always strive to enhance our, our service levels, even if it means reallocating resources, people to get the job done. One of the ways that we do utilize our strategy is to go through our COMSTAT process. As you know, our COMSTAT process is a process that allows us to measure what we do on a monthly basis. Due to COMSTAT, many times we end up relocating individuals to different assignments to get the job done. Over the last few months in my reports to you, I've mentioned to you the times that we have had to move people to address issues such as, as an example, our burglary problem that we had for a few months, we had to move people around. But the ultimate is to measure what we do almost on a daily basis in order to build our strategy in policing the city of Santa Barbara. We have 208 total permanent staff, 13 of those are managers, 195 employees and supervisors, and we have between 15 and 20 hourly employees who put about 30,000 hours of service to us. And those are our hourlies who are very, very critical to our operation and do a wonderful, wonderful job. Here's our org chart, I'm not going to go through each box. I will however, talk about my office as the captains will talk about their divisions. If you look to the right, you'll see Community and Media Relations Team. They have done a fantastic job this last year and we're going to, to utilize them even more in this next fiscal cycle. You'll see that the beat coordinators and the media relations team, which is really Sergeant Harwood, have really gone above and beyond. They've been able to do quality service in terms of neighborhood watch meetings, our citizens academies that we have for a year, two in English and two in Spanish, that continues. But I believe that the most important part, because of the two-year ago budget where we brought on more beat coordinators, it has really assisted us in having more community meetings, addressing quality of life issues immediately, and I do mean immediately, seven days a week to get to individual neighborhoods that need immediate attention that officers utilizing working patrol cannot get to. So the beat coordinators, along with Sergeant Harwood, continue to do a great job in addressing our community policing philosophy on a daily basis. They're a big hit and certainly make my office look very, very good. I felt it important enough last year to move them to my office instead of where they were before. I actually meet with all beat coordinators at one time every Tuesday morning at 8:00 to discuss what's going on in every neighborhood, and they also send me monthly reports that I periodically send to you. They are so important. We do talk about enforcement a lot, but the issue of community policing and media relations is really critical as we continue to build the trust factor in our communities by having these beat coordinators out there as basically many chiefs all over the city. It has really become a great success and I'll tell you that our patrol officers will praise them because they do take care of things that patrol officers would not be able to get to, and we appreciate them very much. My vision for the future is to continue our enhancements of services by being creative and resourceful and to certainly encourage collaboration with those that we serve. We have quite a few ambassadors out there that have come from our citizens academies and we truly believe that because of the beat coordinators and because of our community policing philosophy in Santa Barbara that has been here long before I was here continues, I believe, to, to be enhanced with the great people that are out there. Our police department continues to work hard, not just on the sworn side, but on our civilian, non-sworn side. They continue to do a great job for you and we look forward to continuing that type of philosophy and work ethic in the future. I'm going to turn it over to the deputy chief, who will go over some slides with you before we have some presentations by the rest of the command staff.
Good afternoon. I just want to take a quick snapshot of where we are in terms of our call for service response time. We're just going to look at priority ones today since they tend to be our most critical call for service, as well as our overall Part 1 crimes. And as you can see, we had, we started the fiscal, or the calendar year with an escalating priority one response time. However, we've dropped right back down again last month. So our goal is a seven-minute response time, which is basically slightly above an average for the past three years. So when this line is below seven minutes, we're doing well. As you can see, we approached and slightly crested seven minutes and now we're back down. And we do feel for the year that we'll, we'll meet our seven-minute response time goal. This chart reflects our Part 1 offenses, which of course is our most serious offenses. These are the offenses that we report to the FBI. All police jurisdictions essentially report these offenses. It's rape, sexual assault, aggravated assault, carjack, arson, robbery, burglary. And as we can see, we, in the category of violent crime, we did see an escalation for the first part of January here and February, March, and then we're dropping back down. We don't have specific targeted goals for this because some of these things, quite frankly, exist beyond our control and we're not, we're able to address increases, but we're not always able to prevent increases. But it is nice to see that these totals are coming back down again in the area of violent crime. In the area of property crime, last year we were seeing an escalation at the end of the fiscal, or at the end of the calendar year. However, what we're seeing is a fairly encouraging reduction in property crime. We did take some proactive approaches by developing our criminal impact team, which is a team of four officers and one sergeant that we put together. Their job is to go out and contact probationary subjects and parolees, probationers and parolees who are perhaps responsible for some of these property-related crimes and to contact them, to contact some of our drug users who we know are in town and see if they can make some proactive arrests and, and take them into custody. They have been very effective in the last four months. They've arrested about 80 people for felonies and many more for misdemeanors, which is a very high productive rate for four officers. So we are encouraged that these folks are doing the right thing and we think we're beginning to see this a little bit in some of these crime trends. Next, we're going to transition into our general fund overview. As you know, the police department is primarily funded out of the general fund. This is just a pie chart reflecting that 87% of our budget, of our appropriations, does come from salary and benefits. So we are a very labor-intensive organization. You can see that a very small wedge, 7% is our supplies and services, 5% allocated costs and 1% equipment. Supplies and services are just the bullets and the bulletproof vests and everything that we need, the gasoline, things like that to keep things running. The allocated costs are the costs from essentially from Public Works Department, that would be for custodial services, inner-city services funds for the replacement of vehicles and the maintenance of our vehicles, things like that. And then you can see less than 1% goes to a true equipment. So we are a labor-intensive organization. And as you can see, for FY14, we're looking at a $37.6 million budget and then a slight increase, $38.1 million for the next fiscal year, FY15. This is the numerical values that essentially are associated with that pie chart. And what I wish to emphasize here is the relatively small increase of about 3.8% for the percentage change for fiscal year 14 over fiscal year 13 amended. So we are looking at an increase from this value to this value, and that's what this column represents. There are a couple line items here that perhaps might jump out at you. You might see this rather dramatic increase in special projects costs just for the amended value here and the projected, of course, is very different. The reason why this is so much higher is this is the security gate project that we have ongoing at the police department, where we have $215,000 budgeted for the installation of a security gate, or security gates, I should say, which we received from a grant from the Department of Homeland Security. We will not be able to implement that by the end of this fiscal year. So we will more than, we will be rolling this over into next fiscal year's budget, which is why projected, we're looking at only a $54,000 expenditure for the end of this fiscal year. So we will be rolling that $215,000 over. Likewise, you're seeing a very large equipment outlay here. And then for the transfers in and transfers out, we're seeing a, this was a budgeting technique used by the finance department to budget for the in-car cameras. So this is a one-time cost, which is why you don't see it reflected in any of the other line items here. You know, I do have to correct myself on one issue here is the equipment reflects the security gate project. The special projects costs, I did want to point this out to you. We did pick up on an accounting error in this feature right here where certain positions in the department were double-funded. And they were not double-spent, it's not like we actually had a benefit out of it, but it was double-funded and we did correct that for this next fiscal year, which is why we see this value being reduced. This represents our, a pie chart of our revenues by major object. And what we're seeing year over year is a relatively modest 4.3% increase from last year's total. What you'll notice from this chart is we're primarily, our departmental revenues is primarily parking violation revenue is the lion's share of our departmental revenues. This is our traffic safety money, which we get from the state of California. Part of the, the state's revenue gets sent to us each year, about 9% of our departmental revenues. Prop 172 is a sales tax feature. That was a, an initiative that was passed several years ago, about 5% of our budget of our departmental revenues is from Prop 172. And then just a relatively small amounts in these other categories. What we can see, this chart represents, this chart, by the way, is exactly what you have in your budget binder with the addition of the percentage change columns that I have highlighted here. So I did want to keep our presentation to be consistent with what you have before you in your budget calendar. And we have budgeted a relatively small percent, again, 4.3%, with parking violations representing the majority of that increase of about 3%. There are a few significant changes. What you'll notice is intergovernmental. This is primarily where we receive grants. You'll see that this value is, is dropping down a little bit. That is because we do not project out grants until we've actually received them. So there are a number of grants that we will more than likely receive, grants from the state of California, from alcohol beverage controls that will come in. As you know, we'll bring those to council's attention and they'll be appropriated into our budget. So when you see this significant decrease here, by the end of the fiscal year, it'll, it'll probably level right out. I did want to talk a little bit about our staffing paradigm that we use at the police department, and I want to discuss what we refer to some of these terms. Authorized strength is the number of police officer positions which are funded in the departmental budget or in the city budget. So when I talk about authorized strength, that's how many people essentially we've been funded to have. Operational strength refers to how many of that value have we actually hired? So this is simply the, the number of people we've actually hired. Functional strength are of those people, how many are actually showing up to work? Because there's a number of reasons why some of these people can't come to work. They're either in the police academy being trained or perhaps they're out on injury leave, they're out on family medical leave or they're in deployment. Some of our officers are reservists and they're deployed overseas. And then of course, a vacancy is simply a position which has not been hired out on. And then overhire is when we're hiring in excess of our authorized strength. So it's sometimes helpful to think of these as being subsets of each other, the authorized strength and then the sub, smaller subset, and finally functional strength. This is where we were or where we are. And this slide I've shown you for the last several years, and it's getting a little compressed if we were to try to tag on FY14 and 15. So what we've done is we've taken that data and reflected now on this bar chart, and I'd like to spend just a few moments and go over this chart for you. Is you can see here, this is where we were in fiscal year 10 with 121 officers essentially showing up for duty every day. Of course, this number can change any, any bad weekend and you could have several more officers out on injury. So at any, any given time, this value could go up or down. But this value tends to stay rather steady because at that time we were authorized 140 officers. officers. The next year, during the recession, we did have to leave some of these officers, some of these positions vacant. But what you'll notice is the functional strength, even though there was a decrease in the authorized strength, the functional strength actually increased. And that's because this value increased. We had vacancies that we were able to fill, and quite frankly, in our Police Department, we're only able to hire them so fast. Traditionally, we get seven vacancies a year through attrition, and it's very difficult to put a whole lot more than seven people into the academy. We can do it. We're doing it right now, as a matter of fact, and we have been doing it for the last several years. But we really have to be ramped up and ready to go. And what you'll notice is, over the last several fiscal years, the actual number of officers reporting to duty and providing police services have increased considerably from 121 to 131 by 10. And then now, we're beginning to see that level actually beginning to level off here. And there's a reason for that. And that is because this value, our operational strength, very closely matches our authorized strength, which is what we want. This means that we're staying very current with our aggressive hiring practices. And as a matter of fact, as of today, we're actually overhired by two officers. And we have two more in the academy than we're actually funded for, and that's because we're doing so in preparation for future vacancies that we're anticipating. So, our staffing paradigm is to continue to overhire as needed. However, it should be pointed out that as our operational strength mirrors authorized strength, our ability to stay within budget and be overhired at the same time starts becoming more of a challenge. However, we do anticipate coming in on budget this year, even though, as you noticed, we were currently overhired. I'd like to have Captain Wytham join us, and he's going to take us through the patrol. Captain Wytham is our patrol commander.
Madam Mayor and council members, I'm Captain Dave Wytham. I oversee the patrol division, which is the largest division at the Police Department personnel-wise currently. And I want to talk about staffing levels in the division, really, because just following up on Deputy Manix talking about staffing. The patrol division has authorized 99 sworn positions. That's officers that staff the division. That's from me all the way down to the officers on the street. And in that, currently, we have 92 positions filled, but we're going to have actually one overhired from that, as the deputy chief spoke about being overhired. We have seven officers that graduated the academy recently, and next week, they're going to be with their field training officers. So, we're going to be in a fairly good position staffing-wise. In that, we have also 12 parking enforcement officer positions, civilian positions. Of that, we have 11 hired right now, and we have one in two weeks that we're going to bring on one more. So, we're going to be fully hired in our parking enforcement officer positions. And the division also fields one administrative assistant. The deputy chief spoke of our Criminal Impact Team, and I want to expand on that just a little bit. We provisionally, with Assembly Bill 109, which is a realignment that the state forced some of the prison population back to the jails, anticipated that that would impact us at the local level. So, we created a provisional Criminal Impact Team last year, late last year, where we did field the four officers and one sergeant, and we found that that was extremely effective. As of January of this year, what we did is took that provisional team, and we made it a permanent team. In doing so, we drew from our strength at our team level, which was 61 authorized. So, we drew from that to where we have 57 authorized at our patrol-levels, team strength now, and we took one sergeant. We previously had two flex sergeants in our team strength. We took one of those to create this team, creating an efficiency in the calls for service. We knew, or we really anticipated that our calls for service for these crimes involving what we were going to see as property crimes going up. And we knew this through our CompStat meetings on a monthly basis, and we did see it ebb and flow. But fortunately, as the deputy chief talked about, as you can see, our Criminal Impact Team, since January of 2013, has made 74 felony arrests and 164 misdemeanor arrests, which is very high level of production within just one team. What they do is they work very closely with parole and probation in discovering who it is that's recently either in violation, or they do a lot of probation checks as well, is they make contact with these individuals that have a high likelihood to reoffend. Also...
Excuse me if I could ask, since it's a pretty effective method, whatever you're doing, is it basically knocking on the door and saying, "Hi, welcome to Santa Barbara. We know you're here"?
Counselor Hodgekiss, or, "Welcome back." Yes. It's, they do, with probation, they work very closely with probation as to who the offenders out on the AB-109 and the realignment are. And if, a lot of them are in violation, we get those lists of who's in violation at the time. We also work with, it's like a welcome wagon, because just, most of them have search and seizure conditions, so we want to make sure that they know we're aware of them and that we're out there checking up, checking back with them.
And you said there were 79 arrests, I think was the number you said?
When I ran this, and this was about a week ago, what I did is I wanted to focus on what type of activity. What they do is, in terms of number of checks they actually do, I have those numbers, but I wanted to highlight the actual arrests they did. So, as of last week, they had conducted 74 felony arrests, which is the higher-type crime, and 164 misdemeanor arrests. So, the misdemeanor arrests could be bifurcated into, they're either given a citation, or they're booked out in jails, depending on the crime.
And how many people is the potential population among, that you've made those arrests among? These are all...
If you talk about, just in terms of how many we have currently on probation within the city, it's into approximately 4,000 persons on all types of probation, but that could include informal and formal probation.
And that's, so that's not just released people, that's probation?
Correct. Yeah. But probation also does have a list. They have officers specifically geared towards realignment personnel in that population. So, they know who they are.
Let me add something. If I could add something, to be clear, they're not hunting AB-109s or anything like that. It's part of what they do. But when we look at CompStat, and a certain crime pops out at us as an issue in any community, this is the team that is the covert team, if you will, that will send on these special missions to try to address that issue without impacting the regular patrol team that Dave supervises. So, we have a team ready to go. Specific crimes happen that we can address. They're very flexible. They can come in at day, at night, morning, weekends, depending on what the issue is. So, they're really multitasking, but they're basically dealing with some pretty high-crime issues. Thank you.
And just one addition, that is a good point, is that they are very flexible. When we have a criminal issue that we need to spot crime, and typically through CompStat, we analyze the statistics monthly, is what is the hot issue and the hot criminal issue that's going on in the city at that time, and they're the ones that will initially go and target that. It may be, involve AB-109 or realignment folks, it may not, but it's more of a criminal-type issue that they're, were created to spot. We also, well, first, the K-9 program. Typically, when an officer enters the K-9 program, that's going to be anywhere from a six-to-eight-or-nine-year assignment for that officer. We had one of our K-9s recent retire after a long-service history, that was Officer Tyler Larson with Hondo, or Dog. It's a very sought-after position with the Police Department to be a K-9. So, we did extensive testing, and Officer Chris Payne is the one that met the challenge, was selected. And throughout this process, we have a K-9, a person that assists us with the K-9s, and he actually was on the hunt for a dog, found this dog in New York City. It was Jake, who has turned out to be one of the more finer dogs that we've had. Went through the training for narcotics, and typically, that takes about nine weeks. He passed that within five weeks. So, we're really happy with Jake, our new dog. He's very, he's young, he's enthusiastic, so is the handler. Another item I want to highlight that we conducted with the tragedy in Connecticut, Newtown. One of the things that we wanted to do is, in collaboration with the school systems, is, in fact, they contacted us, and we wanted to create a walkthrough assessment of their schools for any type of threats. So, what we did is, we already have a system available with our SWAT team members to do these walkthroughs. So, starting in January of this year, with 18 local schools, we conducted a walkthrough. And what that consists of is a threat assessment with administrative personnel for the schools, where they will walk through, anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours, and our officers, who are the experts in this field, that can identify where the threats may be, give them suggestions as to how to respond to any critical incidents. They'll do that and walk through them. And again, I say, we did do 18 schools, the local schools. In addition, we had organizations such as the YMCA and the Boys Club also solicit us to do the same walkthroughs, of which we provided walkthroughs at some civic organizations. One of the items, the last item I want to just touch on is, you've heard about the in-car cameras that we've had come up and coming with our vehicles. It's been a long road and a long process. I was a part of that process. It's been about a year and a half to two years in the making. We wanted to make sure that we found the right solution for our officers that balanced the fact that it was easy to use, it captured what we were looking for, it had audio and video, and we had selected the WatchGuard Company as the in-car camera solution. Currently, our officers are being trained this week and next, and our go-live date for in-car cameras is next week. That was the highlights I had for the patrol division. If you had any questions, I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions that you have. Okay.
Thanks. Next, I'd like to have Captain Altavilla join us. He's our commander of our Investigative Division.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Alex Altavilla, I'm the commander of the Investigative Division. I wanted to talk about initially the deployment in the Investigative Division. Currently, it's made up of four different teams, the Crimes Against Persons, Crimes Against Property, Youth Services Section, and Narcotics. Also, in the Crimes Against Persons section, Sergeant Dave Henderson also oversees our lab, which consists of one lab tech, Mike Almeyer. One of the things that I'd like to go ahead and highlight is the Major Investigations Team. The one thing that I think I really like about this is it was a concept that was brought to us from inside the organization, from Sergeant Dave Henderson and Detective Mike Clayder. And the concept is that it is a group of detectives in my division who are highly trained that can be called out to investigate significant critical events or crimes like officer-involved shootings, homicides, or, God forbid, serious injury or death of an officer. They also manage our cold case homicides. We currently have 27 cold case homicides that range in dates from 1961 to 2010. MIT, that we call it, allows us to, quite frankly, manage those cold cases along with our current critical investigations in a more efficient manner. Complex investigations, such as the Brigante shooting, which we had back on November 25th of 2012, which is led by Detective Crystal Bedoya, and also the George Aied homicide trial, which was led by Mark Viera. We're able to go ahead and manage those critical investigations, which basically take the whole division to investigate when they occur. And in conjunction with that, we're able to go ahead and see some good efforts being made in the cold case area, and one of those being the fled to Mexico cases, or Article 4s. One specifically that was headed by Sergeant Lorenzo Duarte and, again, Detective Crystal Bedoya, involving the Pedro Bravo homicide, which happened on September 30th of 1988, and he was just recently arrested in Mexico on March 8th of 2013. So, this major investigation team, again, allows us to, I think, be a lot more efficient in the area of critical criminal investigations and moving our cold case homicides forward in a more efficient manner. Crimes against property, I want to talk about burglary trends. We specifically categorize those as residential, commercial, or auto. Over a long period of time, you can probably look at the CompStat data, and it appears that our burglaries have been relatively flat, or maybe a little bit of an uptrend on a year-by-year basis, but we do see a lot of volatility on a month-by-month basis, quite frankly, depending on who's out of custody. This, I guess, is my time for a public service announcement. Santa Barbara's a beautiful place. It's starting to get warm, and it's going to be nice during the summer, so people are going to want to go ahead and leave their doors and windows open. And that's typically, quite frankly, what we see, specifically in auto-related cases, is that people leave their cars unlocked, and they will leave valuables, laptops, cellphones right in plain view. So, it is a beautiful place to live, but a little bit of preventative maintenance on the citizen's side would be, would be great, to go ahead and basically lock your cars up in your residences and go ahead and hide your valuables. In conjunction with the Criminal Impact Team, we also work with probation and the Sheriff's Department on an AB-109 grant. And what that consists of is going out with a enforcement team and doing enforcement on those AB-109 offenders that may be on probation or parole. Like I said, the investigators know very keenly who these career criminals are, and we know when they're out of custody, what type of crimes we can go ahead and see increasing. And we just merely go ahead and investigate, or go ahead and try to keep them in custody as best we can. The Youth Services Section, from a school collaboration perspective, we have our School Resource Officer, Christina Marshall, who is out on the campuses every day, in uniform and high visibility. Intervention is a big piece of what Christina does. However, she is no stranger to enforcement, and she works very closely with our Youth Services Detective on any kind of gang incidents or issues that come up on school campuses. One of the programs that we're currently working on with the District Attorney's Office is a truancy program. Again, an intervention piece where every month, the school sits down with a school, it's basically a school attendance review board. School representatives are there, also Christina's there, a member from the DA's office, and then a parent or a child who is, quite frankly, having a difficult time showing up at school. Christina assists the school with an element of intervention, trying to go ahead and get the student to, quite frankly, go to school and take their classwork seriously. And absent that, there is a enforcement structure in place that basically holds the parents accountable. Since January of '13, there's been 32 truancy referrals to the District Attorney's Office. However, only three of them have actually been filed as infractions against parents at the District Attorney's Office. And again, from a enforcement perspective, these are just civil actions versus a type of criminal penalty, so they could ultimately end up in a fine. However, our main, our main goal here is to get the student to go, go ahead and go to school. From a narcotics perspective...
If I could ask about truancy, that's, I mean, I think it's sort of you and the schools, I guess, but do you end up talking to parents? Is that the first step?
Yeah. Councilmember Hodgekiss, every month, this School Attendance Review Board sits down, and the school is very acutely aware of who is not showing up to school. So, they will go ahead and bring those attendance records to our attention, the DA's attention, at this monthly meeting. And we will sit down with the parents and with the student, from an intervention perspective, and bring it to the parents' attention that, you know, your student or your child has not been showing up to school, and work with them, quite frankly, to get them to go ahead and go to school and take their schoolwork seriously. Absent that, there is a civil portion that can hold the parents accountable. But our main goal is the intervention piece, which Christina is very good at, and the ability to go ahead and get these kids to go ahead and go back to school.
Not to beat this too much, but do you find that there's surprise on the part of the parents? They didn't know the kids were there or weren't there? Or is there knowledge of it, but they weren't able to do anything?
I think there's a variety of different... I think there's a variety of different, probably feelings they have. Some is maybe they don't believe it, even though it's pretty much down in black and white, but I think it's the ability for us to go ahead and bring the student, the school district, the police department, the DA's office, and the parents together to make sure that everybody has the accurate data, even though, you know, I guess some kids are pretty good at pulling the wool over parents' eyes, so to speak.
Thank you.
From a narcotics perspective, one of the focuses I have our narcotics team working on is the large increase that we've seen in heroin and methamphetamine cases. And that's something that's obviously very concerning to us, just because of typical supply and demand. One of the cases that we recently had was on May 8th, where we had a search warrant served on the east side. Two suspects who had gang affiliations were taken into custody near the area of Franklin Elementary School, and we had 4.5 ounces of heroin and 5.5 ounces of methamphetamine seized during that search. So when you sit down and look at the ComStat data, those seem to be the two drugs of choice that we have some concerns about. And then last, but definitely not least, I think last week, I think the community and all of us were shocked by the fact that in Santa Barbara, we could have a shooting in broad daylight on Milpa Street as our students were getting out from Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High. I'd like to go ahead and, I've already briefed my chief and the deputy chief, but the Investigative Division has made an arrest in that case. The arrest is of a, the shooter was a known gang member, and the shooting is going to be gang-related. A press release will be coming out a little bit later, but under the old adage, you should always go ahead and bring your boss's good news on a Monday. I thought you'd want to hear first. A lot of the details I'm withholding because there's a lot of further investigation that I want our investigators to do. So with that, that wraps up the highlights of the Investigative Division, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
We mentioned there were 27 cold cases, I think you said?
Yes, sir. We currently have 27 cold case homicides that range in dates from 1961 to 2010.
Is there any way to say that's a lot for a town our size, or a little? I don't know how one compares these things.
No, Councilmember Hodgkins, I really don't know. I mean, when it comes down to it, I think one is too many, and that's why we want to go ahead and continue to move these cases forward, because these victims are not forgotten.
Well, everybody would agree that one is too many, but I'm wondering statistically where we stand, if there's anybody...
Councilmember Hodgkins, I don't have anything that will allow you to give you that, allow me to give you that kind of context.
Mr. White and then Ms. Maria also have questions.
I wanted to add to that if I could, Madam Mayor. Excuse me for interrupting you.
Absolutely.
Many of these are fled-to-Mexico cases, which makes it more difficult for us because they're Mexican nationals. Back in the day, I guess I could say back in my day, when that happened, the United States law enforcement community could go into Mexico, basically under the cover of darkness, and look for the murderer. We can no longer do that. We have an arrangement with the Mexican government, with the Department of Justice in Washington, and currently with the DOJ office in San Diego, but a great relationship with PGR and the embassies to go and search for these individuals. But they do the searching, and it's a very complicated way to do things, but it is what it is. That's the arrangement that we have with, that the United States has with Mexico, and it takes a while, sometimes years. And unfortunately for us, there is a statute of limitations for murder in Mexico. There is not one here. So we have had several cases...
What is it in Mexico? Do you recall?
Again, it depends on the situation. They read our case. We put the whole case from English to Spanish. We present it in Mexico City most of the time to their Attorney General's Office. They read it. They verify the interviews. In fact, they don't take it for granted that we've made these interviews. They send attorneys to Santa Barbara. They get, they meet the witnesses and re-interview them. Then they give us what they call an Article 4. I gave you a fast version of it. But it depends on the type of murder it was, determines what the statute is. And sadly, we've had two or three over the last couple of years where we finally found the murderer of one of our residents, but the Mexican government felt that the statute had run out, so we, they didn't go to custody there or here. But when they're Mexican nationals, they will stay in custody in their country. They would much rather come to Santa Barbara jail than to be in a prison in their country, so we don't really argue that point too much. But there is a statute of limitations of murder in Mexico, which a lot of people do not realize, and makes it tough. But the fleds to Mexico are the ones that have given us quite the challenge, and there are some older ones from the 1960s, early 70s, where even then, the leads weren't very good. But we continue, in many cases, to have contact with the family of our murdered victims, and we get calls, postcards, and letters 20, 30 years later, asking us if we've solved their child's murder from 1971. So it's a reality, it's a tragedy, and yes, one is too much, but that's the complicated part of some of these cold cases.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciated your, many of your comments, but about the truancy, I hadn't heard that discussion before, and I think it would, it may be interesting to see the year-by-year comparisons, just as you do with your other activities, of how many you're managing year by year. So perhaps next year, you could share with us how this is trending. And obviously, we've got more resources now than we've had in the past, and I'm imagining in the down years, it's just harder to keep track of stuff. But I thought that was a very interesting piece, and obviously, it's a direct, the school-city interaction is one of those areas where we're doing a lot, we obviously want to do more. But I thought those were interesting insights. Thank you.
Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for your presentation today, everybody.
It's not over yet, just so you know.
Oh, okay. Well, thanks for your presentation so far. So in terms of the Investigative Division here on page H318, it mentions as a project objective for 2014, that once the gang injunction, if it is authorized by the court, this unit would implement the gang injunction. Can you describe what that implementation would be like?
When the gang injunction is authorized by the court, when and if it is authorized by the court, the violation would be, quite frankly, a violation of a court order. So there would be some training in regards to officers, as far as enforcement is concerned, involving the named defendants and also the safety zones. And then the implementation would merely be the enforcement aspect, which would be if we saw a violation, to go ahead and either make an arrest, or if we deemed it necessary to go ahead and issue a citation and forward those cases to the District Attorney's Office for prosecution.
And then I had a question for the chief related to somewhere in your, where it says chief staff, a project objective is to create an interagency plan to increase level of outreach to families of at-risk youths. And so I see this as, you know, related to our youth who are not making good decisions, and maybe we want to give them some help. So what interagency, what agencies are you talking about? And can you just give a brief description of that, please?
Yes. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, one of the groups that we're working with is CAC, with Saúl Serano. Also, the other part of this is the South Coast Gang Task Force, probation, adult and juvenile probation. We're working with the schools, certainly our Police Activities League, and certainly our Parks and Rec Department that's helping us. So we have a lot of collaboration with a lot of agencies. What we are also doing is through probation, recently, we had a meeting with probation where their younger probationers, juveniles, are going to be offered as part of their terms and conditions, which is not the case now, but it may start in July, is to give them opportunities to join any of those sections that I just mentioned. So the services are going to be provided. Currently, there are no, nothing in the terms and conditions that say, as part of your terms and conditions, young man or young lady, you must go to CAC for programs, you must go to AA, you have to go to Police Activities League. Fortunately, with our great partnership with probation, that may be happening very soon, where when a juvenile is placed on probation, that part of their conditions, other than not using drugs, not hanging around with other gang members or in certain locations, is going to be that set to them. You must join this positive direction as a student, or you will be found in violation of your probation. That has never happened before, but probation is now open to that, and I think it's a wonderful thing to do, because then we bring the parents into the, into this possibility of them making a better choice. So that's where we are with that.
The Gang Task Force has sort of a subset, a youth service providers group that meets. In fact, it's meeting tomorrow morning. And youth probation, juvenile probation, they're actually on fire to help the kids. And this relates, Councilmember Hodgkins, to your question about truancy. The truancy attorneys from the District Attorney's Office attend that as well. And I think there is a lot of movement afoot to create a safety net for those young people. So I'm glad to hear that we're part of that. I have other questions, but I'll have to save them. Thank you.
That's great news. You can continue and finish your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll go to public comment.
I'd like to have Captain Torres join us. He's the commander of our Administrative Services Section.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Gil Torres. I'm the Division Commander of the Administrative Services Division. That pretty much entails everything else besides investigation and patrol. So there's quite a bit of other areas I oversee. Today, I'm going to talk about some of the, more of the highlights and things we're working on, on a large scale. I know Captain Widdam already covered the in-car video implementation, which is set to happen in the next week or so. Another big project is the 911 center relocation that we're working with Public Works very closely. They've hired an architect. I think they're going to be appearing in front of you fairly soon at the end of the month, I believe, to go over some of the final design concepts and costs associated with the project. So that's moving ahead. One of my main functions at the police department is being involved in the recruitment and hiring at the police department. The last three years with the over-hiring that we've been allowed to do, we've hired, since 2010, we've hired 33 police officers. Out of those 33, we've hired 10 female police officers, which is very high. That's, it seems like to be a trend. We're getting really highly qualified, well-educated female officers. In fact, we've had to expand our locker room, so we've worked with Public Works to get more funding to move into some office space, to add 15 more lockers to accommodate the influx of women officers.
Mr. House wants to comment on...
Yes, it's on recruitment and hiring. So in that same vein, in Santa Barbara, because we have so many monolingual Spanish speakers or those who would prefer to speak Spanish in their families, what are our practices in terms of recruiting and making an emphasis on having either native Spanish speakers or fluent Spanish speakers that are in the force? And the one, primarily those who would contact the public is who I'm thinking about, at the front desk in the, at the police department, or in the police cars in the streets?
Could you repeat that question? From recruitment process?
What's our effort to recruitment process for competent or Spanish speakers, either native Spanish speakers, or, in any case, Spanish-speaking to interface with our community?
Well, in the application interview process, that's something that they point out, it's usually, it's very marketable for these applicants to come in with that information. And we're always, I mean, that's kind of a high priority for us, to get those person with those skills. You know, it's an advantage on their point if they have those skills, because then they have the upper foot on the other applicants, and that's something that we actively, you know, seek out.
Is there a pay benefit for that skillset?
Yes, there's two levels of bilingual pay that we offer to them. There's a basic, a basic level, and then there's more an advanced level, for someone that do public speaking, that type of thing. So there is bilingual pay, yes.
And then where are the statistics, or do we have statistics on the representation in the force of Spanish-speaking officers?
I don't have the current number of how many Spanish speakers. I don't know, anybody?
I'd be very interested in knowing that, just even after today.
It's available. We'll send it to the council.
Yeah, I mean, it should be pretty easy to get, and I'd really appreciate that, and I appreciate all your efforts in that area, too. Thank you, sir.
I think for multiple languages, too, especially being an international community, and I recall there was an arrest made because someone knew Russian recently, so that was very helpful. So that would be good information to have.
We'll send that to you.
Great, thank you. Please continue.
And the final area is the Police Department's security gates. I know we acquired 215,000 from Homeland Security grant from the county. That's something we're also partnering up with Public Works, working on that project. They recently hired an architect to do the design on it and go to the permit process, so that's moving forward also. That's all I have. Any questions on any of this?
No, I think, no. We're just going to finish up and then go to public comment, and then we might have some comments after that.
Moving on to one of our last slides is a discussion item on supplemental funding request. Essentially, we looked at a potential of a 1% increase of our departmental budget of our approximately $300,000, and we were challenged, well, you know, how could we use that money to its greatest benefit? And we would like to deploy these officers on a motorized foot patrol with, using some of the trike scooters that we've recently acquired, and have them work in a high-visibility, high-enforcement level in the state street corridor, as well as some of the other business districts. We feel that this would give us a large bang for our buck to try to deal with some of the negative blight issues associated with homelessness and street crime in the downtown corridor and other business districts. We do recognize that we're not going to arrest our way out of that problem. However, there's a fundamental paradigm where a shopper or a community member feels unsafe in their, in their environment when somehow they see a homeless person with a dog acting in an unrestrained, aggressive, panhandling manner, or otherwise just, you know, unusual manner. And then, of course, they immediately see a police officer either across the street or down the road, which is why we want to put them on these motorized trikes or scooters, which are sidewalk-compatible and allows for very high visibility and very fast coverage at the same time. We'd like to point out that it is that quality of life issue that waving the flag of the police officer presence that we're really pushing in this capacity. Over the last few years, we've added quite a bit of staffing in our non-s sworn strength for the community outreach and community liaison officers in the downtown corridor, and they have helped. They have been a force multiplier in our restorative, excuse me, restorative policing component. So essentially, we're bringing enhanced services to the homeless, but not really an enhanced level of law enforcement presence. And that's what this supplemental funding request is targeted for in this fiscal year. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Let's go to public comment, and then we'll finish up with any council comments. We'll start with Travis Mitchell, and then Brandon M. I have a couple of minutes here on the podium for you.
Hi, I'm Travis, a Santa Barbara City College student. I had a couple of questions. It was an interesting presentation. I'm seeing a lot of flexible law enforcement here, and I'm seeing some redundant layers going, once again, to the gang injunction. I'm seeing CIT is very effective, is what they're saying, over covering a variety of issues, but I'm also seeing that a lot of new officers are being hired, but it seems that statistics seems to be contradictory, so I'd like some more illumination on that, because it seems to be overall crime is on a steady decline in Santa Barbara. Last of all, I would like to have a clear percentage budgeted for the Public Safety Department for overall annual, just so I could see more, because I have some questions on exactly how much is being allotted and where's it going. It'd be nice to see it standardized. And lastly, as a student, I'd like to see more community outreach, not as much "you must" being enforced, because I heard a lot of "you must do this" with the inter-agency at-risk and the solutions. But I'd like to see more of something that the kids would like to participate in, that the community comes together rather than enforcing it. So thank you for your time.
If you look at the main budget item of the full general fund, you'll get a sense of the proportion of the police and fire departments to the rest of the general fund budget. But it's about 60-something, it's about 60% of the general fund budget for police and fire. Okay. Brandon M.?
Members of the city council, thank you again for your time. I'm here for a couple of reasons. One, I actually have more collective thoughts on what I want to say today than I did last week. And two, I wanted to elaborate on a few points. You know, I've learned that there's a lot of pathos arguments going on around here, a lot of knee-jerk reactions. Nobody wants violence in our communities. Nobody wants this sort of unfettered, what would you say, communal involvement where people aren't able to live civilly. But we also don't want to be harassed by the police. I mean, it seems like almost all of the projects that you guys focus on are on low-income, disproportionately targeted people that live in the lower-income areas of the community. It seems like, under the cover of darkness seems to be the mode here, you know? Think why Mexico doesn't allow us to go under the cover of darkness into their nation anymore to take people by force? I mean, there's a reason why that policy isn't in place anymore. And it seems like the chief, he's disappointed by that. It seems like, again, the reason why this civil injunction was going through civil court was to deny the ability or the guarantee of an attorney in these proceedings. By making it quasi-criminal, it allows the police to waive certain rights that are afforded by every American citizen in our country while not guaranteeing them the right to an attorney, because it's in front of a civil judge. It seems like whenever there was an attorney that came into place, it threw a monkey wrench into the process. Why? Because what they're doing is not legal. There's some sort of idea that they're going to be granted this injunction, but it's still going through the court process for a reason. I don't see anything going on to white-collar crime. It seems like the quality of life needs to be free from molestation of government. All these terms are vague and ambiguous. We need to have clear definitions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, that concludes public comments. Back to the council. Any other questions or comments at this point? Ms. Murillo?
Thanks. We talked a lot about how restorative policing really works with the homeless population. So I would be a lot more friendly to the over-hired officers or any supplemental funding to go to restorative policing rather than your request. Thank you.
Actually, could you elaborate how the TPF interacts with restorative policing in the downtown area, or does it, or, because, you know, in relation to the request and Ms. Murillo's comments?
It absolutely does. They work together. Restorative policing and our TPF literally work together on a daily basis, along with our civilian employees who help. It is a partnership. There is, it's, you know, TPF, restorative policing, clearly two different names, but they're working on the same issues.
TPF is Tactical Patrol Force.
Patrol Force, yes. And they're on bicycles. Our restorative policing, along with our civilian employees, are doing a fabulous job of going up both State Street and Milpus, the beaches, the parks, to literally look for homeless people that might need help and so forth. They're not necessarily looking for crimes, but more to identify them and see if we can get them to services. That's what restorative policing is. The, the issue of, of increasing that, we have 13 people on that right now. We think that's pretty good. But we need more enforcement. You know, our, our business community wants to see uniforms on State Street and on Milpus and in the parks. Our tourists want to see that. We've read that in the paper recently. They want more police presence to do enforcement. You have to have the enforcement. And I think that our business community would welcome more cops on the beat, dealing with enforcement and quality of life issues that can turn into a crime. But more than anything, to allow both State Street and Milpus and the parks, but especially the two business corridors, to have not just the perception, but the reality that we have people out there to enforce the laws and maybe even some of the rules before they become a crime. So our focus is on enforcement.
So would, would this officer, last week at the Parks and Recreation Budget Hearing, there was discussion of a need to coordinate more or have more human resources, boots on the ground or trikes on the ground, I guess, at, at the beach parks, for example, to enforce if there's disruption at a event when they're renting out the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion or something like that. That would be a TPF officer, not a restorative police officer, or both? Or, I mean, would that be part of what the TPF officer would do in terms of coordination with parks? And I don't know if you saw or heard about the Parks and Rec Department Budget Hearing and how, I guess my question then is, would this request interact with what Parks and Rec was talking about last week, and how or how not?
It, it could be a TPF officer on overtime. It wouldn't be, it may not be an assigned job. We'd take from the patrol team to do that, the beat officers from that, from that place, from that area. Many times, it's been our beat coordinators who have worked, let's say, at Franklin Center or Cabrillo Arts. It would be Wojo and Adrian, who are beat coordinators, that we'd be assigned to that. So, you know, we have the availability to use just about anyone, but rarely would we use TPF, because they have a specific focus, and they have to be flexible to move around the city, where this would be a stationary position.
Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On that same topic, do we know what the hourly cost is of the, of the community liaison folks at this point? If we don't know it now, I'd appreciate us having that information. Basically, what is it costing the city on an hourly basis to have those community liaison folks in the field?
I'll defer, I'll defer to the deputy chief on that.
It's about $15 to $20 an hour in that pay range. These are hourly positions, which means they have no benefits associated with them. So we do get a good return on investment on, on that one.
Okay, great. And then, secondly, I appreciate your comments about the next increment, the $300,000 increment as being, and that the business, business folks and all folks would appreciate seeing two more officers in the field. And obviously, the, the issue is always going to be how we pay for these things, as you very well know. The, on the, on the community liaison side, is that further scalable from here? I can appreciate that at a certain point, you can't have more worker bee staff out there without having more supervision, or that you're going to start losing your effectiveness with, with having more folks in the field. But my question to you would be then, is our management structure such that it could handle more, either more people or more, more person hours, shall we say, let's just keep it on that basis, in the community liaison area? Or do you feel like we're maxed out in that arena?
I think that with the eight that we have, it's plenty. They do a great job. They're busy. They make hundreds of contacts every week. You have to also, you know, know that some of our clients trust them for a longer length of time than the, than the blue suit. And that's why they come in very handy. They make great contacts for us and with us. But I think we're, we're just about where we should be. In terms of supervision, one of the many reasons we hired these eight are because they really can work with very, of any supervision. Most of them are experienced workers with this clientele, so they know what they're doing. And they're doing a great job of doing some great public relations on, you know, on, on State Street with all the businesses. I think we're fine where we are. I would not move to increasing that. I think the important thing for me right now is to increase our sworn, to get the blue suits out there on the street. At times, we are overwhelmed on that issue. And I believe our, our business community and our residents in the downtown and Milpus area would appreciate that more than a non-sworn. Because the, the cop on the beat is really what people want to see. Many times, it's a deterrent to, to various things. We will never have a statistic as to what a cop in a certain place just solved, because there's no statistic, because nothing happened. And I think that's part of the success of restorative policing, that we've been able to mix the sworn and non-sworn and have a great collaboration. But I think with, with the eight that we have, in terms of the non-sworn, I, I think we're just right where we should be.
Mr. House?
Sometimes when we're getting this kind of a budget presentation, some things will go, by the way, and not be appreciated. So just, you've heard a lot, but I'll just say again, the, the, I guess what you're calling your community and media relations team, but that group and the effort and the approach that's being used continues, I get feedback all the time. And, and Deputy Chief Mannix, at the downtown organization, we get that kind of feedback of how much they appreciate it. And it's interesting, because some of the appreciation isn't even for the badges. I mean, it's for the presence of these civilian folks that are out there, and they're, they're doing a pretty great job. And in the last budget presentation that we had a year, or the last cycle, where you were shifting and putting civilians into places where, where sworn officers had been, you know, having those, those responsibilities, and you got two more sworn officers out into the community. And so I think, I just want to appreciate that, that effort. And, and maybe echo for those who wouldn't know how much appreciated having, if we were to do it, if we're going to have funds to be able to accomplish it, to get another couple of officers on the street, especially in the, in the, the high-use areas. And I would say Milpus Street as well as, as well as State Street. We've got a lot of emphasis on state, but the needs are really big over on the other side of town as well. Last piece of that, though, there's got to be some wonderful relationship between Officer Hove and, and Olson, and Sergeant Olson, and that whole group, and how they are sharing their knowledge and their approach with the rest of the team. Because that kind of caring, even when they're doing something tough, you know, with the family, for instance, when you're going into a home and you're having to deal with the family of, of perhaps a suspect, the ability to be appropriate in a situation like that, those are really important things. And I hope that you would continue the effort to, to get those kinds of skillsets in, in the entire force. Chief Sanchez, very much appreciated if you can continue to do that.
What, timing is everything. Every year, we have what we call crisis intervention training for new officers to deal with the communities that you mentioned. And that training is going on today through Friday. And we have many of our new officers in this course. It's an all-day course for four days. We've also invited, and we have for years, the Sheriff's Department, CHP, the bus drivers. The class has a mirage, if you will, of, of different parts of our community who deal first-time responders or come in contact with that community. What I would like to add is that we have many, many people who are not homeless, but are mentally ill. They have a home. And we address those issues with the same type of training. So the, when we talk about restorative policing, it's not just for the homeless mentally ill. We get many calls to locations, specifically residences of individuals who are suffering that. And they get the same attention as the person in the park who is homeless mentally ill. So the crisis intervention training has really taken on a life of its own amongst every officer, not just the ones that are specifically dealing with the homeless, because mental illness is in our community, no matter where you are on the economic scale. It's out there. And our officers are doing a great job of addressing those. And many times, when an officer who attends or responds to that, call it a home, or mental illness is the issue or part of the issue, they're able to deal with it, because we're training all of our officers. But many times, they call on Kel Hove and Craig Burley to also respond in terms of getting services provided to these individuals. I think we're becoming a very general police department, dealing with a lot of things, intervention, prevention, and enforcement. But you've got to have the enforcement, and I think we need to continue to, to move in that direction in some instances.
Well, Chief, I just want to double my appreciation for you with those last remarks, and also just mention it is, in the words of somebody I highly regard, about honor and respect. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at the section here in the Budget Binder, Tactical Patrol Force, page H334. And it lists the projected felony arrests for 2013, and that number is 118. Is that felony arrests just for this unit or for the entire department?
Just the unit.
Okay. Well, I guess I'd like to see the statistics for the whole department. I, I just remembered when we were having sort of a pained discussion about how to solve the homeless problem here in these chambers, it was Sergeant Olson, I think, sat right there and said, "The only thing that works is restorative policing." So I, yeah, he said that. Mr. Armstrong's making a face. I remember him clearly. So I, I, I've seen it. I, I attend the Milpus Action Task Force meetings. And, you know, if you want to help people get off the street, you have to do law enforcement and that, that social worker, you know, kind of element. So I just, again, reiterate my opinion on that. Thank you.
May I ask a question? You, you would like to see statistics on what exactly?
Oh, thank you. I was just looking, I was wondering if our police force had only given 118 felony arrests for this, for 2013?
Oh, no, that's just for this group of officers, yeah.
That's just that unit. Okay. So that's, that's what I was asking. Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay. So we do not have a budget session Wednesday in the morning. And so the next budget session will be Monday, June 3, which we'll hear the Finance Committee's recommendations, and then we can discuss how we want to make any changes if anything is budgeted.
Yeah, just to kind of, the, kind of the plan is, so that first meeting in June is we will give you the Finance Committee recommendations, and then we will, if there are, if there are issues that have come up at these meetings where you had said you want to come back and make a decision, we'll kind of list those issues out. And then finally, if the council wants to allocate any of the additional funding or make changes to, to the departments, that would be the time. And we have three sessions scheduled that week. You know, based upon what I've seen, I doubt you'll need all three of them, but we'll keep them scheduled until the, you know, council gets into it, and then you can do it all maybe in one or two, or, but we have three sessions scheduled.
But that first one, you'll have, for example, an Excel sheet where we could see the money going in and out and see...
We'll have each of the, the funding priorities that the departments have identified the cost, and then we'll, you'll be able, literally, you can move the money around at that time.
And someone was making a list of other things we may have mentioned that will be on there?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, and then on the one-time capital funding that we had talked about, we, our plan would be to bring that back to you in late in July, when as the, the RDA situation evolves a little bit more. And I think we've, we'll also identify one other little chunk of one-time money that you can add to the mix.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.